The things that it talks about is removal of the portables at three, our three elementary schools which have portables. So I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Adley who has a memo and a discussion on, on the portables. Or an architect.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you. It's a chilly start to the day. Thank you for coming out. So clearly, one of the priorities that was sort of passed on to administration was the concern about, and that, and really apparent anyway as I've gone through my orientation and induction to the district, the desire to remove the portables from the elementary schools. So the administration has reviewed the K G and D. The last official report, I believe, was December 7th, 2016, which has proved very helpful in moving some of the district projects forward. It continues to inform Mike's capital plan. And many of the things in the K and G, K G and D study was the direct recommendation to deal with the portables. Having done that and having had, having had reviewed sort of the progress, how we're using the K G and D study, it's administration's sort of recommendation. There are three things, there are a couple of things coming together here. One is the work that's already accomplished in the district around the capital projects. Two, if I may say here, we're sort of rolling into the facilities master plan, the concept of the libraries reimagined that has been on the table, so to speak. So you'll forgive me that I'm just going to roll in, I'm going to use the plan to roll in a couple of concepts here. And ultimately, one of them is that we would like to go back out to an architect to get a more specified recommendation on the use of the portables as it relates to the three schools, Hindley, Holmes, and Royal. And also to sort of combine with that, the libraries reimagined. The reality of the libraries reimagined, as we, as I sort of prepare for the budget administratively and have the plans for those, the libraries reimagined is sort of like exploding, to the point financially, and there's certainly there's PTOs and board funds and people are ready to, to step to the plate and help with this. But honestly, it's too much money. And what we have learned through the good work that people have done before me, and also currently here in the district, and the good work that they're doing from librarians to administration and everybody in between, it's also tapped our expertise a little bit. It's too complex. So honestly, to get a, a recommendation that we can really stand by, I honestly feel that if we put forward the libraries reimagined as they currently stand, it's not going to take a deep dive for the thing to fall apart, to be honest with you, because it just needs to be more thoroughly done. That's not disparaging against any of my staff or anybody who suggested this. It's just too big and it's, it's a major project. When you have a like, just to start with, like a million and a half just in furniture, and that's not without reimagining anything. It's just a non-starter, really. So I would recommend that since these converging forces are, because, for example, one of the things you could do is take space in a, in a portable, put it into one of the libraries that we have, and redo the library. Why would we, like, do them separately? So it would be our recommendation that we would go out and get bids according to the bid process that would address the libraries reimagined and the portables and give us a specific plan of how to move forward with those in, in the best way. Mike has done a very nice job taking some of the system recommendations from, from the plan and building it into the capital plan, because the buildings themselves are very nice buildings. So there's a lot that's good about it, and that was, that was also pointed out in the K G and D plan. So it'd be our recommendation that we would do that. We have worked with one company to date, Silver Petrocelli, to give us a good sense of kind of how that might come in. That came in at, I think it was, was it thirty?
Thirty-four.
Thirty, thirty-four thousand. So we would have to go out to another couple of companies and follow the bid process to get competitive bids and insight. I think you'll end up, well, A, I couldn't recommend the, the libraries reimagined anyway, right? In the current budget or in any capital plan until, it just seems a nice opportunity or, or a unique opportunity, or a timely, or necessary opportunity for the two things to be looked at together. So it's really our recommendation to the full board, to the committee here and the full board, we would like to go out and, and take the, the good work that the, the K G and D has done, but build upon that more specifically around the portables and, and the library reimagined and come back with a, a recommendation to, to the board. I think we'll end up with a much better project, product.
Question. So in the Ox Ridge building plans, are they, they're already reimagining their library, I would imagine, so are we going to use that as a sort of baseline template for the other schools? Because that's going to, I would imagine that's already in the process.
Well, certainly Ox Ridge has certainly been reimagined all over the place. But, but yes, I mean, that was even one of the initial sort of discussions, how would we be going off reimagining stuff when Ox Ridge is actually doing theirs? So we would have to, we would make sure that there's some coordination between, and actually, that Ox Ridge is reimagined as we would want it to be.
Right. And we would also solicit a bid, I would hope, from that architect as well, given that they're, I mean, they would be part of our bid process?
We did reach out to them.
Okay.
They did not really, they had the capacity to take on.
Take on all this? Okay. Thank you.
But is there something we can harvest from what they've already done in terms of framework that they set up?
Sure. I think you'd use a lot of what you had for the elementary school specifically, maybe not so much for the middle school and the high school, just because they're different levels, but you might take components of that to feed into the other four elementary schools.
How much of the work that was already done from the reimagined libraries committee is being used by the Ox Ridge group?
So in all honesty, I'm not 100% sure of that. I would have to look at the, which is, because we have that, the educational specifications for, for that library, and I think we, what we want to do is make sure that the, the vision and philosophy for the, the libraries do match, and I think there's time enough to do that, right? So I think that would be a step, just to make sure that we check the backs, that we have coordinated that, because that would be most important to do. I don't know, Mike, Mike, you want to talk about just sort of how we have taken some of the aspects of this report for, for the committee, might be helpful, and how we're using some of it?
Well, the, the library for Ox Ridge in the ed specs, it calls for slightly bigger space, and they call for it to be delineated out into like a, you know, maker space, collaborative learning spaces, spaces where the kids could practice and learn how to do some, you know, like audio visual type productions in front of a green screen. And that's sort of what we want to have happen at the other libraries. I think the biggest impact this will have on Ox Ridge is the standardization of the types of furniture, because ordering the furniture for Ox Ridge is, is, you know, something that's done later on in the project, after the construction's well underway, and, and so we'll make sure that the furniture for the library matches the furniture that's going into the other school libraries.
So I know when we built the ed specs, we did take some of the very high level concepts, what you're saying.
Yes, yeah.
The high level concepts that came from the reimagining libraries went into building the ed specs, and then the additional level of specificity will really show up in the furniture?
Yes.
Yeah, when you look at what, what's in, at Ox Ridge right now, as Mike said, I mean, it, it appears to have all the major components, right? I mean, it's, it's exceptional. But specifically, just checking off the vision of the libraries reimagined to make sure that we've got it covered is probably a useful step.
Thank you.
I want to know. Up is on. I'm sorry. I'm a newbie, I'm sorry, everybody. I guess I find it fortunate that we're looking at both of these aspects of building redevelopment or enhancements together, because, you know, what also I'd like to look into is maybe there's certain libraries where the spaces could be used for classrooms and you'd have some additions. So I think from a synergistic standpoint, this is a great study to look at and look forward to what the true engineers and architects can come forward with.
And just to be clear, so it's, we would hire the architects to look at all of the schools to do the libraries, not just the three schools that have the portables?
No, we're, we're essentially looking at the three schools primarily.
So the architects would do, for the library component, the six schools, so not Ox Ridge, that's already underway, but for the portables, the three schools.
Okay. But if they would look at the, all, every school to reimagine a library?
Yes.
Except that's what, just.
Yes, that's right. Yes, that's true.
So if we could just back up for a second. So the assumptions are still the same. I think we saw the enrollment report, so we can confirm, you know, our enrollment is declining, but so modestly, that this work is still important.
Oh, yes.
And, and nothing in that report suggests that redistricting is going to help us. So our conditions are the same. It still makes sense to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I would just support that 100%.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
How is this list of architects generated?
Largely by reference. So Techtron came back by reference. They are doing the Huckleberry Hill School in Brookfield, actually. Peter Chisofie is actually, he did the library for the town of Darien, and he's done some work in New York and some public schools, SLAM because of Ox Ridge, and then Dr. Adley actually recommended Northeast Clever.
Okay.
And so these are, these are all Connecticut, Connecticut firms.
Okay.
I think we've got the bases well covered, to be honest with you.
Great.
And should we reach out to K G and D since they did the original plan, or is that?
I, I think, I mean, if there's any liaison with K G and D, I think they can do the liaison. At this point, I wouldn't be recommended to be, I think, I think a fresh look, an independent look is probably healthy.
Okay.
So really, we are looking for, for, in the subcommittee to move it to the board ourself, to give us the guidance to continue to move forward with these companies. We've already got one that's really ready to go, and already produced the report. I can't really present it here because it's not really ethical to do that. But we're just looking for, is that the direction that the board wants to go in and just support the actual bid process?
So I think it's up to us to then move it to the board, right?
Yeah.
So do we take a vote on supporting to move this into?
Absolutely.
To architects and, and put it, put out a bid process?
Make a motion.
We don't, we have no motions in here.
Right.
It's sense of the meeting.
Certainly, sense of the meeting.
Yeah, agree.
So sense of the meeting, we all agree?
Yeah.
So we'll bring this forward at our next board meeting. Our next item is discussion of the high school storage facility, or lack thereof.
So the, so the short version of this, Mr. Chairman, you, you guys, yeah, I think you're, you put this on, so. Do you want me to talk about it?
Yeah, please, please.
Oh, sorry, all right. I just want to recognize that you put it on the agenda. So the, as, as my understanding goes on my discussions with my colleagues here, my administrative colleagues, so at, at some point historically here, well, we have these things laying all over the place, right? The, these containers, they're not exactly classy, right? But it's not exactly unusual for, for districts to have those. Like, I mean, if you go around most school districts, you'll probably see them. But I think that there's a desire to improve the storage, make them, make some things more local to the accessibility of the areas, because there's some distances between some of these facilities. At one point, I believe this was bonded, and at one point, I believe that it didn't really get completed, and you, board members here, long serving, would have the history in this, I don't, but my understanding is that we deferred that, then returned that money, at least that's what the records would show, and so we didn't use that. But I think the, the concept still is important enough to, to the board that they want to revisit this, so that it was the board who put this back on, so I'm hap, we're happy to actually do that. Our recommendation here again would be, I hate to say that, but I don't hate to say it, but it, but it just seems like it's a simple answer, it's not, but this isn't, to me, this is completely independent of the project, you're just sort of listening to, this is a smaller version of that, but it still needs a critical eye to ask our staff to do that. I'm not so sure that we're going to get the, the best recommendation, so this would be, we would say to do a smaller version, a smaller assessment by architecture for this particular project. Michael is very close to those containers and lives with them, so if you want to provide color to what I'm saying, please feel free.
No, there's six at the stadium field. There's two over between the baseball and stadium east. One is short term, it comes in and out with DJFL. There's one by the varsity baseball field. There's a storage shed, one of those plastic Rubbermaid sheds, along with two construction boxes over by the varsity softball field. There's the construction boxes, one or two, at all the other fields at the high school. There's a storage shed at the middle school that is used by youth soccer, you know, Conex container, and there's smaller Conex containers that go in and off site at Royal and Hindley with the DJFL. There's also storage space under the bleachers at the high school. One is fairly empty now. Another one is split, about two thirds of it is the, the high school football program, and the other third is used by DJFL from when they were displaced out of Renshaw Road. So the square footage needed to accommodate all the programs is adequate, but the locations and what do you want to store the equipment in is what's up in the air.
So just to disclose, I was a former DJFL board member, no longer, so no conflict of interest there, but, you know, I'm pretty close to this issue. My wife worked with Mike on getting DY Lac's storage facilities, right? And just being around the facilities a bunch. I, I think it's really important we take an inventory. I know the exact room that they're, the DJFL is using. I think we have to take an inventory of what's being used by the schools in the community. Frankly, I don't think the community should have a right to use storage facilities before the schools. I realize there's also a need, to, to Mike's point, of dispersion of facilities too, because if you even use everything under the bleachers, it's to no use of what they call the north field, the softball field, if you will, varsity softball, and even maybe some of the oval field. So I'm in full support of not, I think there's been a great accounting for this, but to really get in deep and see where the true needs lie. And some, you know, I think some of the, it will be additional building space. I mean, nothing's frustrated me more seeing hurdles out year round, and, you know, you think about the capital depreciation and weathering of some equipment that just didn't have room to be put away. But, you know, there's going to be a mix here between temporary storage facilities and better use of our current permanent facilities, and then maybe additional facilities. So maybe I jumped in a little too quick, but this seems like a really, really good place to start, and to your point, this study should be much, much less in terms of expense, correct?
Right, yeah.
And I think it'd be great to pursue.
While we're talking about outdoor storage, my information may be outdated, but I recall there being a cart sometimes parked inside in the high school, a little gator or something. Do you have enough storage? Do you remember this? Sometimes a gator had to go inside? Yeah. Do you have enough storage for all of your equipment?
Yes.
And that, does, does that still get parked inside?
No, we have a, we have a little garage there around the back of the building where the delivery entrance is, and we keep a, a gator.
Yes.
And a, we have another machine, we put a big snow blower on it, that's up there now for the winter.
Okay.
The high school athletic department, there are three electric golf carts.
Okay.
And in the, in the wintertime, they're stored down in the bottom of B building, there's a large storage room down there.
Okay.
And then during the school year, they're kept up either in the storage area or over by exit 16. You know, the, in between the bleachers there, that, that athletic department entrance.
Okay.
And they're used every day.
Okay.
Two by the coaches and one by the athletic trainer. They're used every day and on Saturdays.
Okay.
And then, you know, during the winter, in the summer.
Yeah.
They're stored away.
I just want to make sure we have enough, we're, we're confident that if we're looking at storage, that the other things that might be stored outside are all accounted for as well.
I think when you do the inventory, you do a wish list of everything. You throw everything in there that, you know, may be and not the best storage in the high school, you know, I think you need to get a laundry list.
And would, would we also then, with, with the, take this year, for example, the football game against New Canaan, to bring in temporary, temporary stands for visitors, would we also think of doing that, or would that be, is that too much to add to this plan?
Go, go a little further with that if you could.
You mean buying, owning, listing the temporarys?
Well, either owning or just expanding the visiting stands to maybe put storage under them, make them more permanent, as opposed to a bleacher setup, that they have a, a permanent setup, maybe that's, again, I'm not an architect, but, but maybe that would be something that we could build, have the architects think of to put into this plan.
I would think of as an overall study, the property, you know, and I think you guys talked about this earlier, last spring or something, I came in my other role and encouraged you to kind of take a top-down view of the site and see where the setbacks are and such. I mean, that might be a great spot, but I would hope the study would look at that. Somehow some trees showed up there, which, you can move, you can move those, or, or something like that. You know, yes, so the answer is yes.
But it needs to be more than, you know, my, my point is, it's not just storage, it's also usage of that site.
Best, if we're, if it's, the way I look at it, if you're looking at the utility of the site, the overall site, you want to find the best utility for it. And so that spot may or may not work, but you would hope that this study would include, hey, you have, you know, visitor bleachers that have room underneath, not currently, but could be a place, and, you know, so definitely.
So the scope of the study is, is, you know, pretty much anything stored for sports or otherwise that we don't, outside that we don't have?
Permanent facilities for.
So we're going to assess what our storage needs are, and then take a look at the, all of those needs, and then talk about best use.
I would include summer school, any summer school classes that run on the fields or activities where they also have stor, I don't know if they have storage needs, but they're using all those outdoor facilities in the summer.
And if I could just reiterate, it should be used for the schools. You know, the DJFL has their storage needs, but I don't think that's our role to look into that.
And I think earlier conversations at the board level, we've said the priority is our needs as a school district, if there is room and space, and as Dr. Adley has said, being sort of a good neighbor and a community member, that's a secondary.
Correct.
Look.
Mr. Chairman, I just meant, I mean, I think it's, it's perhaps obvious, right? These are going to run concurrently, I really want to make sure that the priority is given to the major plan, right? So, so I don't want one to take over the other, because it would not, I mean, the priority would not be that one, first of all. So if we can run them concurrently and stuff, fine, I just, I just want to make a note here, from, from my point of view, the portables, the resolution of the, the design of all of that is the top priority for here.
Agreed. No, I think the rationale for putting it on was we had it a couple of years ago, and we've never done anything, and just want to make sure that we continue the process since it was, it was thought of as, as a need, and we still think it's a need.
Well, when you see these pictures, and for, for parents, we'll post these for you, these pictures of these, inside of these containers are.
Alan, back to your point, what is realistic in terms of timing, so that we can make sure that all of these are done correctly? We know that kind of a storage build would probably happen over a summer, most likely, or late spring summers, it'd be less disruptive. So what are you, if we think realistically, in terms of the use of the administration's time, what's the best way to think about what things are happening when and what's realistic?
So it might take us, it may end up that, let's say, that this plan, the outcomes of this plan are put on the capital plan for two, two years from now and identified with the Board of Finance and the RTM as like two years from now, and they identify it next year as, okay, well, we know, we, they can plan for it perhaps next year once they see it on our plan. I have to make sure I'm, I'm very conscious of the plan and process, or unaware of that, and how that actually happens. That's, that's my cursory understanding of the system or the, the process, but.
Okay, so the goal is to have the results of this on the capital plan that you're presenting to us next year, effectively, that will go then through the Board of Finance, RTM, et cetera, so that we can, in two years from now, you're looking at construction, is that what you're just saying?
That's about right, but let me, I'll turn to, to my business manager, see if I have any different.
So the portal study and the library reimagined, the hope would be to select an architect within the month. It would probably take them two to four months to complete a study, so you'd be post the 21 budget, and then some kind of inclusion of work in possibly the 2022 budget with that work following, maybe in the 2023 budget for those projects.
Well, again, one of the things the Board of Finance has told us is that we don't always have to bring capital projects on cycle. So if we had a large project, something like to remove the portables, we could bring that at any time and suggest, you know, say, so if it comes in April, I don't think there's anything precluding us to have to wait until the following January to bring that forward.
I'd second that, big time. No, I've heard the same message, loud and clear.
So as soon, in that relative case, as soon as we are ready to, with, with a plan to bring forward, then we can do that.
Okay. So based on that, what's realistic in terms of when you would shop this second plan out? Not, not because I'm pushing for it, I just want us to understand what's realistic timing, so that we can manage accordingly our, our time.
Well, we, we, and honestly, we haven't had the discussion about how this is going to run concurrently with administrative time and administrative priorities. I hear if, if the board, the full board approves the concepts, I think I'd have to get back to you in terms of just, like, what's the timing? We would try and run it, if we can run it as concurrently as possible, that's what we would do, but I certainly wouldn't, I mean, running concurrently is not that difficult in the sense that we're going to, we're going to sort of shop it out a little bit, so that would be the intention. I don't want to overcommit to that, to be honest with you, but, but I think we're saying.
I don't want you to, that's why I'm asking you a question.
No, no, so I would wait, I, till, till we hear about, from the architect back in terms of their timeframe. I think we can, we can do it internally here and shape the, the description of it, and people could come in, visit and walk around, and we can show them this facilities and do that. For now, I would, I would just like to take forward from the board, when the full board meets that, yes, they endorse this, and then we'll just get a wee better time, we could probably have a wee better timeframe from, at the next board meeting or so, but it shouldn't be, I, I just don't want to overcommit to it, right? But I think we would try and run.
We'd try and run concurrently, totally clear.
No, I mean, for me personally, I think that the, the portables is a need, and a library imagined is a need, and the DHS facility is a want. To me, we would, if we could put them both out to bid at the same time, that would be great, but then we can prioritize the, the library reimagined project quicker, and maybe the, the storage facility goes back on cycle and that becomes a 2022 project.
Call them both a need, but one has a priority over the other. That's the way I would put it.
Yeah, I would just note, just as, I would tend to give the board heads up about cultural and communicative, communication issues, so since this is the first time publicly that we have gone out with the libraries reimagined, this may or may not be a surprise to people in the audience, it will be a surprise to those in my organization who have done leadership, right, around this particular issue. I think it's a better, clearly would not propose it if we didn't think it was a better way to go, and that will be fine, we'll, we'll communicate with people, but I'm just giving people a wee sense. There's also a wee cultural part with this, because there's been so much discussion and support from organizations and so on and so forth, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, so do we want to make another motion to move this forward?
Well, no motion, I'll do a sense of the, definitely.
Sense of the, sorry, yeah, sense of the.
I'm a little slower. Definitely.
All in favor of moving forward? That's unanimous. Okay, our last item is another public comment. Yep, Mr. Davis?
Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street. I'll try and do a mile a minute. First, I, I agree with what Dennis said, definitely on the portables, anything that you have, bring forward as soon as possible, because you do not need to lose the time waiting for an off-cycle. On the storage, three things that I just sort of, when the original storage facility came to F and B, one of the things that we thought of was there is storage. was there is storage in the bowels of the high school, so to say, and that whether or not certain equipment couldn't be transferred around, so we hoped that that would be part of the study. Second, while I agree with John's overview of the utility of the field, on the youth and storage for the various youth groups, they do pay rent. And therefore, I believe they do, or they should. If there's a reasonable return on investment so that we can put things there to accommodate them, that would be very good for us. And the return on investment doesn't have to be, you know, a two, three year. But over time, I think that's very important, since they're the feeders to all the good sports that we have. And I think that overall, the storage facility did have some angst in the committee. So an overall study would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.